Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Thursday, June 22, 2023 regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain commissioner, Cameron Cepeda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you now. We thank you and we for your goodness and your mercy on our lives. We ask you for wisdom and knowledge over every county commissioner here today. And we pray for those that are that work for the county as well, for wisdom and knowledge. And we pray for protection over every one of our men and women that are serving in the military, protection over all of the sheriff's department, police department, fire department, all those first responders. We pray for protection over their lives. And we pray for every person in Hillsborough County, that it is well with them and their spirit, souls, and bodies. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. We have four special proclamations to present this morning, and Commissioner Myers will present the first three.
It is a pledge to honor two emergency response teams who have done a great deal for the safety and welfare of Hillsborough County. We will first present a proclamation that recognizes the dedication of our local amateur radio operators. Would Bill Miller, emergency coordinator for amateur radio, and Tim Dudley, director of emergency management, please join me at the podium? Good morning. Good morning and welcome. Local amateur radio operators are vital to our community. Their calm voices provide the necessary information for us to respond in the most safe and efficient manner during any state of emergency, especially hurricanes. They dedicate countless hours of free radio communication during the most challenging times in addition to providing other vital news that impacts our residents and visitors. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation in honor of their hard work and commitment to Hillsborough County. The proclamation reads, whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating nearly a century since the first human voice broadcast over the airwaves and radio continue to provide a bridge between people, society, and countries. And whereas amateur radio operators have provided countless hours of volunteer community service during emergency lending their talents free of charge to local organizations for decades. And whereas amateur radio operators offer invaluable assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-a-thons, walk-a-thons, fairs, and other events. And whereas the American Radio Relay League, also known as ARIO, is the National Association for Amateur Radio Operators and the ARIO Amateur Radio Field Day exercise will take place from June 24 to June 25, 2023. And whereas the ARIO Amateur Radio Field Day exercise is a 24-hour emergency preparedness program that demonstrates the radio amateur skill and readiness to provide self-supporting communication to the community. And whereas Hillsborough County celebrates the diligence of the operators known as HAMs, who also serves as weather spotters in the in the SkyWarm program of the National Weather Service. And whereas Hillsborough County recognized the services amateur radio operators provide to the emergency response organization, including Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Office of Emergency Management, the City of Plant City, the City of Tampa, and the City of Tampa Terrace. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 19 through June 26, 2023 as Amateur Radio Week in Hillsborough County and encourages residents to show their appreciation for the dedication, spirit of service, and expertise to all amateur radio operators in the community executed this 22nd day of June 2023. Bill, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I deal with all volunteers and we're always looking for some, but the people I have in place enjoy what they're doing and intend to continue to do so.
And we appreciate all that your group is doing for us because I certainly appreciate all of the alerts that come when it's hurricane season. The alerts are very, very, very nice and I share them in my newsletter with my district. Tim, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. Yes, ma'am. I'd like to thank Commissioner Meyer and the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing this vital resource. It's about redundancy and being able to make it through the most difficult times. And when when all those systems fail, the amateur radio teams will get the message out. And I feel more confident having this team here in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask my staff, would you? Do you want anyone to join us and pick in the back of the board? Okay. Okay, Mr. Dudley, you decide to stick around and that's wonderful because our next recognition will honor our Community Emergency Response Team, also known as our CERT, with Chris Smith, Elizabeth Dunn, Linda Perez, Riley Tough, Pastor Dr. Rawl, Vasquez, and Bob Preston. Please join me at the podium. Good morning and welcome. Members of CERT are absolute superstars in our community. They do an incredible job during emergencies courtesy of their experts' emergency skills and 24-hour readiness to provide self-supporting community response. It is a privilege to present this proclamation declaring June 22, 2023 as Community, excuse me, as Community Emergency Response Team Day. And the proclamation reads, whereas the Communities Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT, originated in 1985 and are composed of trained civilian volunteers who assist local first responders during disasters. And whereas CERT volunteers provide countless hours of community service in emergencies. And whereas CERT members serve in all 50 states, including the tribal nation and the U.S. Territories, and each is unique to their community and essential to building a culture of preparedness. And whereas CERT volunteers further demonstrate their value by providing free service during disasters, including hurricane in response, participating in county preparedness exercise, staffing emergency positions, and attending charitable events. And whereas the experience of CERT members are on call for 24 hours emergency preparedness, demonstrating emergency skills and readiness to provide self-supporting and community response without further infrastructure being required. And whereas Hillsborough County recognizes CERT service of CERT volunteers to Hillsborough County Fire Office of Emergency Management, the City of Plant City, the City of Tampa, and the City of Tampa Terrace. And whereas Hillsborough County appreciates the diligence of CERT volunteers who serve tireless hours in support of the county's communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 22, 2023 as Community Emergency Response Team Day in Hillsborough County and encourage all residents to show their appreciation for the dedication, spirit of service, and expertise of all the volunteers of CERT executed this 22nd day of June 2023. Mr. Smith, would you like to share a few words with us?
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you Commissioner Myers and the Board of County Commissioners. For a few years, we have been working with the CERTs and working to grow and build that program up without their support, without the support of the communities. And those who want to volunteer and work during an event or a disaster, we couldn't be where we are today with them. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Dudley, would you like to share a few words?
Thank you again, Commissioner Meyer and the board. The Community Emergency Response Team, another vital group, groups that are throughout the Hillsborough County as well as the City of Tampa. We have tremendous volunteers. We have a strong community here. When we need someone to fill the gap or take the lead to help get the communities back up quickly, they have the folks that live and work right there in their community and they trust those folks. And we trust this team. So again, another proud opportunity to recognize our community partners, which makes Hillsborough County and all our municipal partners more strong and more resilient. Again, thank you.
Thank you. We have the team in place, so I hope everyone that is sitting here this morning, you're part of the team and you have your water, your batteries, and everything you need in case we experience a hurricane. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, because now you can buy as much water as you want to. But when the hurricane, we receive the notice, we are limited. So let's go out and get everything that we need, but hopefully we will not have a hurricane this year. Okay, so let's go back and we'll take a picture. Hold on, let me get the proclamations. Come on, my staff. If anyone else would like to join us, come on. Some places we go, we say last call, but it is the last call for the proclamation. I'm getting ready to present this morning. I am thankful to have a very special group of guests to join me today to put a spotlight on a very important issue. Will the following individuals please come to the podium? Freddie Barton, Executive Director of Safe and Sound, members of the Safe and Sound Hillsborough Leadership Council, and other dedicated partners who are here today. It's okay if someone come on this side, we have enough room. Good morning. Thank you all for coming today. Hillsborough County and its partners are committed to ending gun violence in our community. Many of those partners are with us today. They have done a remarkable job raising awareness about this issue and demonstrating how progress can be made by working together on a number of fronts. And I would just like to share with this team, a couple of years ago, we had a workshop talking about gun violence that really excited our community and how we must, if we see something, say something. And this leadership team here have been working tirelessly to make sure we have a safe county. I am proud to present this proclamation declaring June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. The proclamation reads, whereas senseless gun violence every day is claiming far too many lives in our community and in the nation. And whereas firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and teens, with 2,808 children hurt or killed by gun violence in the United States in the first six months of 2023. And whereas every life tragedy claimed by gun violence is one life too many. And whereas Hillsborough County recognizes that there is much to do to combat the multitude of issues that cause gun violence, but it would never short from its responsibility to combat it. And whereas Hillsborough County celebrates law enforcement for all that they do every day to help stop gun violence and make the county a safe place to live and raise a family. And whereas Safe and Sound Hillsborough, in partnership with the Children's Board, Mom Demand Action, Rise Up for Peace, the Brady Campaign, and other community-based organizations, is committed to saving lives by actively addressing the pressing issues of gun violence. And whereas orange is the color that Heidi Pennington friends wore in her honor when she was shot and killed in Chicago at the age of 15. Just one week after performing at President Barack Obama's second inaugural parade in 2013, and after her death, they asked people to stand up, speak out, and wear orange to raise awareness about gun violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 23 as Gun Violence Awareness Month and urges everyone to support gun violence safety, to speak out if something is seen, and to sort out the differences in peace nonviolent means executed this 22nd day of June 2023. Mr. Barton, known as Freddie, come on, say a few words.
Good morning and thank you, Commissioner. The first thing, it's not about the gun. Behind me, we have a host of partners, including our Leadership Council, some members of our Leadership Council members, our public defender and our board chair, Mrs. Julian Holt, our clerk of court, Mrs. Cindy Stewart, Captain Marvin Johnson from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. We also have our state attorney, Mrs. Susie Lopez. We also have Rise Up for Peace, Moms Demand Action, the Brady Campaign. And this is just a small representation of the partnerships that it takes in order to keep our community safe. In 2022, we had over 300 shootings, non-fatal and fatal, here in Hillsborough County and parts of the city of Tampa. If we do the quick math, that gives us a little about 25 shootings per month, less than one per day. However, in the last seven days, we have had a total of nine individual youth under the age of 18 that were arrested on gun-related charges, including two 17-year-olds, three 16-year-olds, three 15-year-olds, and one 14-year-old. And did I say that that was in the last seven days? We have a problem not with guns, we have a problem with decisions that are being made in our community by our youth. Safe and Sound Hillsborough, in partnership with all of all of the agencies represented here and throughout our community, we stand at the ready to make sure that our youth know that you do not have to do these things, that there is another path. I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners, Hillsborough County, and all the agencies that support Safe and Sound in our efforts to reduce and prevent gun violence. Thank you Commissioner Myers for championing the cause to provide some funding that Safe and Sound Hillsborough received to lift up a gun violence prevention pilot, which includes education and awareness. Safe and Sound Hillsborough commissioned a short film entitled Blink. It's roughly 16 and a half minutes, and it's been seen by well over 1,500 people here in Hillsborough County. It's been admitted and being shown in independent film festivals beyond Hillsborough County. And it addresses not the gun, not the ammo, not the right to carry, not those things, but the decisions that our kids are making in response to trauma, to temporary situations, and things that could be resolved otherwise. We also are providing a community response team that will provide support for individuals and their families, community conversations that brings victims as well as individuals involved in these charges together, as well as our Youth Gun Offender Program that's working with these youth who are getting arrested on these charges, working with them for six months and monitoring them for an additional six months. We're proud to state that through our reporting center and our other juvenile justice-based programs, that we're seeing our recidivism numbers continue to decrease. The only way we can do that is by having the community supporting us along the way. It is bigger than law enforcement, it's bigger than Safe and Sound, it's bigger than Rise Up for Peace, or any organization. It's only when the community comes together can we truly make a difference. I stand before you, not just as the executive director, but also as a proud father who just got back from seeing his son leave off to the army. Thank you Commissioner Cameron Cepeda for your prayer. But for that, or my one child and now my two sons that I'm very proud of, we also know that there are many sons that are lost right now. And we have to work together to create a positive pathway so we do not lose one more life. I'd like now for our public defender and our Leadership Council Chair, Mrs. Holt, to come up and speak, as well as our state attorney and our clerk of court, if she decides to. I have to give deference to my bosses. Thank you.
Well, good morning. And I'm going to be very, very brief because the true thanks here goes to the county commission, to Ms. Wise, who has assisted us in obtaining the proper funding, Commissioner Myers, who has really selected us as a project that she wants to see go forward and move forward, and more importantly, for everyone that's actually involved with the Safe and Sound. But I know Commissioner Hagan likes us to be short and brief and to the point. And I know that it's budget time coming up. So I just really want to say thank you to everybody. And really, when we talk about this public health model that we have created here in Hillsborough County, what we're trying to do is educate and make everyone aware of the dangers of having guns in the wrong hands. And that's really what happens. And what I can ask of you as the public defender who has to represent individuals day in and day out, that are children that have made bad decisions, is this: if you have a gun, please keep it secure. If you have a gun in your car, please lock your car. And please educate your children as it relates to the true dangers of handling a gun when they really don't know how to do so. Guns are not the answer to the problems that they may have in their lives, and we must educate our children and accept responsibility, not just for our own children, but any child that you have any influence over. I ask you and implore you, please help them and educate them. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My office is very proud to sponsor and to work with Mr. Barton and Safe and Sound Hillsborough every day. The kids in our community need education, they need mentors, they need a supportive community and a safe place to call home. They don't need guns. This is something that we as a community can work together to try and eradicate this problem. Like Ms. Holt said, one thing that every person in this room can do, if you have a gun and keep it in your car, lock your car. It's a simple thing, it's the click of a button. But many guns that are on the street, I've learned from Mr. Barton, are stolen out of cars that aren't locked. So that is something that every member of our community can do. And again, my office is proud to work with Mr. Barton and Safe and Sound Hillsborough as we work to eradicate our problem of gun violence with teens. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be very brief, but it is an honor to stand here after seven years of being involved with this organization. I want to thank again the county commission for their support and their encouragement for Commissioner Myers for continuing the effort. We work every single day to make sure that we keep the kids in this community safe, and it is not an easy task. The access to guns, in my opinion, has grown nothing but greater in the last six months for our children. And we keep seeing, as Mr. Barton said, more and more children getting hurt and ending up in a juvenile system that they should not belong in. So thank you again, Commissioner Myers, and thank you to the rest of the commission for continuing your support.
Come on up Freddie, Mr. Barton. This is presented to you. And I just want to share on behalf of the Leadership Council, you all play a very vital role, the community. Go out and talk about it. Talk about the importance of not picking up a gun to your child or with your family, or if you're at a church, or you're in a civic organization. The more we talk about this, the less lives we will be able to save. Just one too many is too many for us. Thank you so much. We'll go to the back, take our picture.
Now Commissioner Cameron Cepeda will present our final proclamation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Roberto Pizano and Tony Morion please join me at the podium? Good morning and thank you for joining us. Today, I'm truly honored to recognize the strength, compassion, and perseverance of Cuban Americans, who have been instrumental in the economic and cultural growth of Hillsborough County. Their courage when facing adversity is well-known and an inspiration to us all. It's a pleasure to present this proclamation, which salutes Cuban Americans in our community, our state, and nation. It reads, whereas, according to Amnesty International, the government of Cuba continues to clamp down on all forms of dissent, imprisoning political leaders, independent journalists, and artists. And whereas, it is vital for Cubans to be granted all forms of civil liberty, which includes their right to vote, liberty of conscience, and the right to self-determination. And whereas, the people of Cuba are still prevented from having free elections, leading to historic protests from Cubans living worldwide, who demand the country's government embrace democracy, liberty, and economic security. And whereas, Hillsborough County is a diverse cultural center, respecting and valuing life stories of immigrants and exiles. And whereas, for countless generations, Hillsborough County has strengthened its connections to Cubans who escaped the Castro regime and have made significant civic, economic, entrepreneurial, and cultural contributions to the region. And whereas, Hillsborough County stands with Cuban exiles and the people in Cuba, supporting their right for self-determination, freedom of conscience, right to privacy, and other basic civil liberties. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 23, June 2023 as Cuban-American Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and urges all the country's people to maintain their hope for freedom and prosperity awarded this 22nd day of June 2023. Mr. Pizano, would you like to say a few words? And I believe Mr. Morion will translate.
Good morning, all the commissioners. Good morning, Gilbert County. Good morning, everybody. I have to use my friend, Tony Morion, to translate for me. My English is no, no good.
Good looking.
Okay, estamos aquí dando las gracias al condado de Gilberto, a los comisionados.
Okay, we're here to thank Hillsborough County Commissioners and the county. To this county and To this county and to this country who gave me the rights that I had lost.
Le doy las gracias por esta proclamación que han hecho al exilio cubano.
I want to thank for this proclamation for the Cuban exile.
Un exilio de un pueblo que lo ha dado todo por volver a reconquistar la libertad que aquí tenemos.
An exile community has given everything to have the liberty that we have here now.
Gracias a este gran país, gracias al condado de Gilboreo, gracias a todos ustedes por esta proclamación a los cubanos.
He wants to thank everybody, he wants to thank the community, he wants to thank the county and this great country for their freedom and for this proclamation that we have here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to add a few words, Mr. Morion?
Yeah, good morning, honorable commissioners, county administrator, county attorney, and the good people of Hillsborough County. It's what great honor it is that we stand here today as a community, a community who's faithful, that one day, freedom will ring ninety miles from this coast of ours. This is a great country, it's a home to many people who have come here looking for liberty. Let us pray, and let us work together to stay free in this country, and to bring freedom to the other countries who have fallen to communism, to socialism, and to those tyrants that are south of the border. Thank you very much for this proclamation. Honored as a Cuban American that my parents made the right decision, and that this county made the right decision to recognize this community leaving in the county that sprang freedom for Cuba back in the 1800s. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
[applause]
We need more space here.
Excuse me, sir. You have to be on the side.
Okay, one, two, three.
Stay up cheesy, you want to say Viva La Libre?
Everybody here, huh?
Into the count. One, two, three. Liberty, viva la vida. Thank you, everybody.
Viva la vida!
Do what?
[unintelligible]
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. That might have broken the record for most people in a picture for a proclamation here, I'm not sure. All right, Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Good morning, commissioners. We have one item of the agenda item by Commissioner O'Am. It's Item F2, is to direct the county attorney's office to work with county staff and stakeholders to analyze the criteria and procedures outlined in House Bill 657, to enact a school zone speed detection program for the county. We have one item that has been deferred to July 12th. This is Item A11, which is to adopt a resolution in the form presented related to the undergrounding of electric distribution facilities in the Danish shores Pelican Island Iraqi Point community. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Wustel. It is Item A40. This is to select, award, and authorize negotiations with three highest-ranked and best-qualified firms for the opportunity to provide owner-occupied rehabilitation program services for the Affordable Housing Services Department. We have several items for time certain. The first one is Item G1 at 10 o'clock. This is to receive a report regarding the potential extension of the Leroy-Selman Expressway to Big Bend Road. Item B1 at 10:15 is to accept the residential street lighting program audit report performed by the county internal auditor's office. Item E1 at 10:30 is to receive a report from John Flanagan, CEO of CareerSource Tampa Bay, to provide the requested update to the B.O.C.C. on consolidation of Hillsborough County and Pinellas County local workforce boards and agencies. This is related to Item B2. And then we have Item B2 also at 10:30, related to Item E1, approve the Tampa Bay Workforce Alliance, Inc., doing business as CareerSource Tampa Bay planning budget in the amount of $21,942,604, as required by the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, and acting in the capacity as a chief local elected official. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Move approval? Second.
Motion to approve the changes, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I thank you, the board of going to public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions or value in terms of providing valuable input to the board members, however it is requested. At the same time, when you address the board, the comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues. The board has set aside forty-five minutes this morning for public comment, at the discretion of the chair. The board may again hear comments at the end of the meeting. The chair will call on speakers by name, in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly in the microphone. Up to three minutes will be given for each speaker. The first three speakers this morning are David Coleman, Nicholas Glover, and then Tanya Duran. Is Mr. Coleman here?
Good morning, my name is Dave Coleman. I'm here to stand with Food and Water Watch and ask for a public hearing on TECO. Also to stand with Moms Demand Action and Common Sense Gun Laws. Please consider any effort to create two more seats on the commission. Reconsider any effort to create two more seats on the commission unless they're based on population, not area. Our county should be united in inclusion, not exclusion. Three missing signatures to the Pride proclamation only invites negativity and hurt in the community. Permanentless carry begins July 1. Chad Cronister has provided free gun training at Shooter's World. With an expected additional thousand deaths in Florida, what can the county do? On A5, I'm in favor of a public hearing. On A7, can we please extend the age to eighteen and a half? Many kids are still in high school at that age. Why is the county, on A12, why is the county paying TECO when TECO already hiked residents? Why $16,000 in advertising for a hearing? You could pay me, and I'll put it on my Facebook and get more people there. On A18, donating eighty acres to Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office? Don't we have a housing crisis? On A22, eVerify Hillsborough County Health Card? Excuse me? On A50, $84.72 on a garbage increase on residents after TECO's increase? And $216,000 in advertising? Again, please just cut me a check, I'll get a bunch of people there. On A55, a four-year extension with an abandoned recharge well and a $3 million increase in cost? Not without further clarity. I was a businessman, and I wouldn't keep that subcontractor around. On A60, thanks for a public hearing in September, costing $80,000 in advertising. $3 billion proposed plan for water resources with three water authorities in Hillsborough, maybe we need to reevaluate where we're going with water over the next ten years. So you have codified eVerify at our indigent Baker Act facility, at our Axe Detox Center, at our Health Card Program. Hopefully, the right to privacy and state and state constitution, right to privacy, state constitution laws, and federal laws will supersede Tallahassee. In what world do we refuse to help those in need the most? Axe encourages the AA program. A tenant of AA is that I am responsible when anyone anywhere reaches out for the hand of AA. I want the hand of AA to be there, but not my county.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next three speakers, Nicholas Glover, Tanya Duran, and Michael Ball. And I just want to point out, the next seven speakers are all here for the same item, A19. And while we definitely want to hear your comments, I just want to point out that this item is on our consent agenda. It has not been pulled, it cannot be pulled unless we waive our policy. So, I've sat up here a long time, this item's going to pass. So, we welcome your comments, but sometimes, less is more. So, good morning, Mr. Coleman.
I feel like that was aimed at me, Mr. Chair.
Nope, not at all.
Well, good morning, everyone. I will be incredibly brief, as Chair Hagan said. The Tampa Bay Chamber is here in support of A19. Of course, this is on the consent agenda, Mr. Chair, as you said. Just want to reiterate the Chamber's support for the connectivity between Hillsborough County and Pinellas County via the Cross Bay Ferry and the inter-local agreement, which is so very important to all of us. I will just refer you to the letter that our president and CEO, Bob Rolak, I believe, sent to you all a couple days ago, and just appreciate your deliberation on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Tanya Duran, Michael Ball, and then Chris Steinecker. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Tanya Duran. I am the CEO and president at the Tampa Bay Ferries Alliance. Thank you for your time this morning. I will be brief, certainly do not want to rock the boat. The Alliance is an independent nonprofit organization. Let me say that again. The Alliance is an independent nonprofit organization committed to bringing a quality year-round ferry service to the Tampa Bay region. Since 1971, I have been a Hillsborough County resident and witnessed its remarkable growth and development firsthand. This region is highly suitable for ferry service and boasts a natural resource that is currently being underutilized. The Tampa Bay waters can be the basis for this region's continued and shared growth and success. The benefits of a permanent regional ferry system include reductions in roadway traffic, congestion, and unhealthy emissions, while supporting increased tourism and economic development that our region depends on. Ferry service is highly flexible, cost-effective solution, and as demand increases, can be easily expanded. Ferry service is accessible, convenient, efficient, reliable, safe, and it is proven. For those who have not had the pleasure to experience the ferry service yet, it is also relaxing and fun, and I encourage you to experience it for yourself. Since launching the Tampa Bay Ferry Alliance earlier this year, I have been incredibly surprised at the community's outreach and support and enthusiasm behind this ferry Many are in disbelief that it is a seasonal service and only a seasonal service, and not permanent. By working together, we are confident success will be achieved, and Tampa Bay will have a permanent, sustainable ferry service. We hope we can count on Hillsborough County leadership and the awesome staff to continue to create a brighter ferry future for our county and the entire region. Thank you for your time this morning. Have a great day.
Michael Ball, followed by Chris Steinecker, and then Sean Drinkard. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. My name is Michael Ball. I'm the chairman for the Tampa Bay Ferries Alliance. I live in South County, 6941 Crest Point Drive, Apollo Beach, Florida. And I'm a retired naval veteran. Served twenty years in the service, retired U.S. Special Law Operations Command, worked over at U.S. Central Command. I can remember sitting there and along, waiting for the use of a ferry to use, because I lived right across the bay. I used to stare at the stacks of Big Bend stacks right across the way. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak and help bring this potential opportunity for everybody, so everybody can benefit from it. What I will tell you is Tampa Bay dominates our geography. Tampa Bay is the county commons. It is the county commons. It is the one thing that we can all unite around, talk around. We're united by the Bay. So I appreciate the opportunity to use this. I appreciate A19, allowing the continuance thereof, so we can continue the development. I just want to commend the commissioners, all of you, on the effort that you guys have done. I do want to point out, Commissioner O'Am, thank you for the efforts that you've done recently and the recent progress you've made. I look forward to those presentations later today. So I really appreciate all the work that you're doing down there. So I appreciate it very much. But just want to say, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for allowing this project to continue. We're here to help, we're here to inform, we're here to educate. Let us help you get there, so we can all benefit from this and the economic benefits thereof, as well as help other individuals grow. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Chris Steinecker, followed by Sean Drinkard and Ryan Adalberg. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Chris Steinecker. I'm president and CEO of the St. Petersburg Area Chamber of Commerce. I stand here today as a chamber member, as a Tampa Bay Ferries Alliance board member. I stand here with my partners from the Tampa Bay Chamber and my St. Pete Young Professionals, who you'll hear from as well. We want to say thank you. We want to appreciate what you all see that we see too. We see a future together where we're connecting our communities, offering options. We do believe it's a public-private partnerships in our future, but we do really appreciate the leadership of you all and those who have pushed in for this second and third year of this contract. We do believe we have made progress. You've seen the record numbers. We do believe we're on track, and we're excited for the successes ahead. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Sean Drinkard, followed by Ryan Adalberg and John Harrison. Good morning.
Good morning. Sean Drinkard, interim president for the Tampa Downtown Partnership. Thank you for the time today. Definitely here, also in support for the Cross Bay Ferry. Just noting that the ridership continues to be stronger than ever. This transit system showing in the fifty percent of sales with tickets over this past year, you know, also just resulting in, with the future service, what we've seen here, we just need the additional support, other transit options within the counties. So thanks again for the support, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Adalberg, followed by John Harrison, and then Todd Randolph. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ryan Adalberg. I'm the advocacy chair of the St. Pete Young Professionals, also a very proud resident of Hillsborough County. I just wanted to stand here today to express our profound gratitude for the continued support of the Cross Bay Ferry. Your commitment and dedication to this essential service has enhanced the lives of countless individuals, including young professionals like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Harrison, followed by Todd Randolph, and then Brooke Ward. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. As a St. Petersburg resident and a young professional that works in South Tampa, I just want to say thank you for continuing to bring the Cross Bay Ferry to Tampa Bay. I'm proud to see it grow year over year, and I look forward to using this, as well as my friends, for the future of Tampa Bay and connecting both Tampa-St. Pete and our greater region. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Todd Randolph, and then Brooke Ward, and then Jennifer Taylor. Good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph. I'm here on behalf of Food and Water Watch. We're here on a unified, common message to urge the county commission to schedule, plan for a public meeting to address the fossil fuel rate hikes. This has been an ongoing issue, the TECO rate hikes. They've increased dramatically over the past few years, based mainly on TECO's bet on using natural gas. We can only imagine that they'll increase further. Action needs to occur now, and these rate hikes are really going to be unfairly felt the most by the most vulnerable citizens among us and here in Hillsborough. So I'm here on that common message to urge the county commission to schedule a public meeting to address these fossil fuel rate hikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Brooke Ward, followed by Jennifer Taylor, and then Stephen Kaufman. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brooke Ward.
We do believe it's a public-private partnerships in our future, but we do really appreciate the leadership of you all and those who have pushed in for this second and third year of this contract. We do believe we have made progress. You've seen the record numbers. We do believe we're on track, and we're excited for the successes ahead. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Sean Drinkard, followed by Ryan Adelberg and John Harrison. Good morning.
Good morning. Sean Drinkard, interim President for the Tampa Downtown Partnership. Thank you for the time today. Definitely here, also in support for the Cross Bay Ferry. Just noting that the ridership continues to be stronger than ever. This transit system showing in the 50% of sales with tickets over this past year, you know, also just resulting in, with the future service, what we've seen here, we just need the additional support, other transit options within the counties. So thanks again for the support, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Adelberg, followed by John Harrison, and then Todd Randolph. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ryan Adelberg. I'm the advocacy chair of the St. Pete Young Professionals, also a very proud resident of Hillsborough County. I just wanted to stand here today to express our profound gratitude for the continued support of the Cross Bay Ferry. Your commitment and dedication to this essential service has enhanced the lives of countless individuals, including young professionals like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Harrison, followed by Todd Randolph, and then Brooke Ward. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. As a St. Petersburg resident and a young professional that works in South Tampa, I just want to say thank you for continuing to bring the Cross Bay Ferry to Tampa Bay. I'm proud to see it grow year over year, and I look forward to using this, as well as my friends, for the future of Tampa Bay and connecting both Tampa, St. Pete, and our greater region. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Todd Randolph, and then Brooke Ward, and then Jennifer Taylor. Good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph. I'm here on behalf of Food and Water Watch. We're here on a unified, common message to urge the County Commission to schedule, plan for a public meeting to address the fossil fuel rate hikes. This has been an ongoing issue, the TECO rate hikes. They've increased dramatically over the past few years, based mainly on TECO's bet on using natural gas. We can only imagine that they'll increase further. Action needs to occur now, and these rate hikes are really going to be unfairly felt the most by the most vulnerable citizens among us and here in Hillsborough. So I'm here on that common message to urge the County Commission to schedule a public meeting to address these fossil fuel rate hikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Brooke Ward, followed by Jennifer Taylor, and then Stephen Kaufman. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brooke Ward. I'm with Food and Water Watch, representing over 5,400 Hillsborough County residents. This morning, outside, we rallied a group of individuals, getting prepared to come in here and ask you guys to act. We are entering the hottest months of the year. Rates for electricity are skyrocketing. It's becoming unaffordable. We've been coming here for a couple months. We appreciated the letter to the PSC, but there's so much more that this Commission can do, and we're here asking you not to wait any further. Let's schedule a meeting. We've got experts that can tell you what to do. In fact, on Friday, this came out from the City of Tampa, Climate and Action and Equity Plan, with 153 things that you could also do as a county. We worked with the city to create this, and there's a lot you can do here. If you turn to page 57 in here, they show that if we actually act on fossil fuels that are driving our extreme heat and our rate hikes, that we can cut the average electricity bill from $162 a month to under $30 a month. It is unconscionable not to act. You know, I've been told by other organizers, don't go to the county. The county doesn't do anything. They don't answer the pleas of the people. So let's change that, because I think that each and every one of you up here does care about the constituents here, that you want to help us in this problem that we've been facing. So there are several things that you can do right away. The first is, let's schedule a meeting, a public meeting, a workshop, where we can bring experts in, where we can bring community members in, where you can bring your experts in, and we can start talking about an actual plan, a solution. And then next, let's start putting that plan into action, into comprehensive policy. Three main buckets that you can fill. We can start phasing out fossil fuels in our buildings. The county's already started doing this. You've already been putting solar around town. We can keep this going. We can invest in energy efficiency. You can help with community block grants for weatherization, for upgrading HVAC systems, for using less energy. If we use less energy, we have lower bills. And then finally, let's invest in resiliency projects. I mean, Tampa Electric is moving their headquarters to Midtown because they're afraid of the sea level rise here in downtown Tampa, caused directly from the exact fuels that they are burning. So if we start resiliency projects, not only are we protecting our pocketbooks now, we are also protecting them in the future. So please, today, we're asking you, make a motion, set a meeting. We're going to keep coming back, but we'd love to be working with you and not just talking at you. Have a great day. Thank you.
Last three speakers this morning. Jennifer Taylor, followed by Stephen Kaufman, and then Mr. Military.
May I give you some handouts?
You can give them to the clerk. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Taylor. I'm here today to ask for your assistance in getting public water to our street. I live on Cedar Lane in Lutz. Because of this decision to receive approval for public water is based on the Lutz Plan, I'd like to read a couple of lines from the plan that, as it was written about 25 years ago. So it said, "Lutz will continue to be a community whose citizens treasure open spaces over urban and suburban form. We will also work to support more local and small businesses while accepting tradeoff of traveling beyond Lutz for major goods and services. Residential development will not be accomplished with conventional subdivisions." There's two distinct components of the Lutz community. The east of Del Mayberry is considered semi-rural, and the west component is the areas that has a suburban-style planned residential developments, including Calusa Trace, Cheval, and Villarosa and Heritage Harbor. So on the map that I gave you, as you can see, the blue boundary is a line that is around this area that we're requesting for the water to come through. It is my street, Cedar Lane. Wilson Lake, I mean, Wilson Lane is right next to Cedar Lane. There's a 16-inch pipe, if you see on the purple area. There's a 16-inch pipe that comes down Del Mayberry, and off of that, there's an 8-inch pipe that goes to Wilson Circle, where you see there are two residents on that street that have public water. We are both, Cedar Lane, we are all on septic and well, we are all on well and septic. Many of these homes are on variances due to septic tanks being too close to the wells. Both of my neighbors' septic tanks have a variance, as they are both too close to my well. The residents are concerned with the quality and safety of our water by the cross-contamination of these septic systems. There's a well surveillance database for Cedar Lane that shows in 2016, which is the most current results, that we had wells that tested high positive for petroleum solvent and VOCs, volatile organic compounds. One of the wells that tested positive is next door to my home, and we had lived there at the time. We lived there 10 years before that. We never were, nobody ever notified us that there was anything, any kind of contaminations. As you see on one of the handouts, there are two identified sources of contamination in the little red triangles on the section two, which is the bottom part of the map. The top part is just the same map, but it doesn't show the little triangles. There's, they were gas stations, both of them, Sidco and also the 711, which is actually on the west side of Del Mayberry. There's an abandoned landfill off of Simmons Road, which is approximately a half mile from our home, noted on map three. We, as a neighborhood, are very concerned with this information, as this is the water we wash our dishes.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Bonnie, I want to refer this over to you. It's my understanding county water surrounds this neighborhood, and it would require a cop plan amendment. So if staff could look into that, determine if this is county-generated or neighborhood-generated, and if we can update Ms. Taylor in my office, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Can I just say thank you to your office? Mr. Reedy is wonderful.
I'm sure he appreciates hearing that. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Steve Kaufman, and then last speaker is Mr. Military. I'm not going to butcher your first name. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good to see you again. Last week, the City of Tampa released their Many Years in the Making Climate Action and Equity Plan. We've heard about that and even seen it. It's included with a direct call to move off fossil fuels, and it calls out Tampa Electric again for their false net zero kind of solution to our environmental problems. We've watched our bills triple since 2020, and we wonder why Tampa Electric keeps doubling down on fracked gas. Surely, you have the same questions we do. Tampa Electric's continued reliance on fracked gas undermines its efforts to ramp up renewable energy production. I think we share a vision of a world not held hostage by fossil fuels. And we all have a small step, but an important step, to take at this time in our life together as a county. We're asking the County Commission to work with us to ensure the Public Service Commission will hold a public workshop, and if not them, you all, and those of us who can join you, that we can begin to look at this issue of sustainability with honesty and with trust, trusting one another. I want to thank you. Thank you for what you've done so far. The letter to the PSC requesting that these workshops be held is much appreciated. But as we've said before, this is only one step. The next step is for us to gather together. I do not believe that this County Commission, or that this county, is without leadership to do that. I trust all of you to be the Commissioners we've elected you to be. And as one of TECO's largest customers, I hope this county will take the next steps to oppose the fossil fuels that not only drive these unbelievable rates, but that will bring down our community and the world if we don't make a change. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker this morning, Mr. Military. Good morning, sir.
Okay. Good morning to the B.O.C.C. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Jethulio Gonzalez Mulatieri. I am the chair, the LULAC Chair of Climate and Environment Issues. That's who I'm representing today. It's fortunate that the County Commission honored our emergency responders today. Florida and Hillsborough County has gotten really good at response and recovery over the years regarding climate emergency, and we're also getting there when it comes to resilience and mitigation. However, the most crucial facet of, when it comes to climate emergencies, is actually prevention. And in that regard, we have a long way to go. And this is not just the County Commission, this is across the state. The city of Tampa has taken the initiative to work on prevention through Climate Action and Equity Plan, right, that Ms. Ward was so kind to show you all. Now it's time for the B.O.C.C. to step up to the plate. This Climate and Equity Plan has the benefit of addressing the unconscionable TECO energy rate hikes. And I'm from West Tampa, and West Tampa is a predominantly Latino and Black community. And that community, our community, is disproportionately affected by energy burden. It has the highest energy burden in the county. And the logical extension of that is that if people have to choose between paying their rent or paying their mortgage and paying their light bill, they might end up evicted or foreclosing their house, and that's going to lead to gentrification in West Tampa. I don't know about y'all, but I like keeping the identity of my community the way that it is. I like what makes Tampa what it is. I like what makes Hillsborough what it is, and the power's in your hands to do something about it. And that's why LULAC stands in solidarity with the Tampa Bay Climate Alliance and Food and Water Watch. You know, we're here to encourage the B.O.C.C. to have a public hearing focused on the Climate and Equity Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That closes public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie, want to introduce the first item?
Thank you. The first item is Item G1. This is a 10 o'clock time certain. This is to receive a report regarding the potential extension of the Leroy-Selman Expressway to Big Bend Road. We have various representatives here today. First, we're going to start with John Patrick from Meyer Community Infrastructure Planning. But we do also have representatives from the Tampa-Hillsborough Expressway Authority and also from FDOT. And Mr. Patrick could introduce those folks.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. This is a project that, information you had asked for Commissioner Owen on April 5th. So we are bringing back the staff report for your information and potential action towards the next steps. So you had asked us about the congestion, funding, and other constraints and possibilities. So I will just stop at this and hand over to Bob Frye. He's the Planning Director and Innovation in TIA. He will take over, make the presentation details. And then Greg Slater, the CEO of TIA, is here to answer any questions for you, as well as DOT, Justin Hall is here, as well as Justin Villetz from Hart is also here for any questions you may have. After the presentation, I will come back and talk to you about the potential next steps. With that, I will hand it over to Bob Frye.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Bob Frye, I'm the Planning Director at the Tampa-Hillsborough Expressway Authority. And I also have with me, I'd like to introduce Greg Slater, our Executive Director, who will be speaking afterwards on some of the other issues. I'm going to be focusing on the benefits of the project. So, down here, get to the right. There we go. The project overview, as John Patrick mentioned, we will be going from the Selman Expressway down to Big Bend. That is the corridor that is being investigated. The analysis that was done was a toll viability analysis, so I want to make sure we understand that it's showing what the, that this corridor is viable as a toll facility, and then we will go further, if asked, into more analysis that would really hone into some of the details. This project was entered into the Long Range Transportation Plan for 2045 on the needs side, and so it is on the needs analysis, and it was done last year. It's falling to be the seventh strongest TPO project to relieve congestion. The concept that we analyzed was a four-lane toll road elevated in the median, similar to what you see in Gandy Boulevard, or the reversible lane segments that you'll see on the Selman Expressway. The slip ramps would allow traffic to move in and out of the express section, as well as access to local areas. We'd also be looking at reconstructing the parts of 301 to make sure that this can happen, as well as interchange improvements with the Selman Expressway in various points along the corridor. And most importantly, one of the things to bring up is, we're looking at a flyover movement over at Bloomingdale to tell intersection operations, when we looked at it, what it would take to make that intersection operate. We've broken the project into three phases, from the Selman Expressway to Bloomingdale, Bloomingdale to Gibsonton, and the Gibsonton all down to Big Bend. We're looking at how it would impact not only the corridor and traffic, but also the communities. One of the things that we've done and tried to do with the Expressway Authority is, we like to leave the corridor better than we found it. So how do we work with, through community engagement and community planning? We've already reached out and worked with the Planning Commission, talking about the community plans in the different areas, to find out how we can make this project work and fit. And that's included in the numbers that we're talking about here. We did an impact analysis on the corridor, not only from the north-south, which would be looking at the 301, 41, and 75 corridor, but also the east-west on some of those feeder roads that would be looking at that. What we found with this analysis, oops, there we go, is that in the full build with I-75, that we would basically be improving this situation in traffic from north-south, very much with volume of the capacities, which 1.0 is the capacity of the roadway that we're showing in 2045 at basically good operational levels. So we're looking at a 2045 design year for this, and taking into consideration all the growth that is already approved and expected. One thing to keep in mind on this, this is a toll viability analysis, so it is a little bit on the conservative side to make sure that we have, that the volumes are there to support the toll facility. On the east-west, on the east-west, we're looking at several of the roadways will still be at capacity when we get down to 2045. But a lot of that comes about, too, because right now, sometimes people can't get there. So now when we alleviate that and pull those trips up, they're able to get there, and so it may be a little bit higher. And also, we've noticed, too, that these are the corridors that people use to access 75, 301, and 41. In terms of, what does this mean to the normal driver? Typically, it would mean that 30 minutes, it would knock off the trip from Big Bend into downtown Tampa. From Gibsonton, you're looking at 15 to 20 minutes, and from Bloomingdale, about 10 minutes that we'd be able to do that in 2045. So that's basically making the trips more efficient and pulling them above the corridor so that we can, they move more efficiently. And we have a project that we just finished over in Gandy in 2018 that was interesting because Councilman, City Councilman Citro at the time was standing on the top when we first opened it and said, "I'd like you to come back and show us four years, three years later, what did it do?" Well, this is analysis that we did from 2018 to 2022. We were able, the Gandy took about 40% of the trips and moved them, the through trips, above, and basically gave the corridor back to the community below. Reduced the crashes by 22% from 321 to 250. If you look at the roadway here, you'll see the road going up and down, start-stop, speeds were shifting a lot with the Gandy extension in place. Much more, much more stable flow. The people know what is happening, and the speeds are staying the same throughout the corridor, which is safer, more efficient operations. And it knocked 40 to 50% off the travel times for people to go from the Gandy Bridge into downtown. So this project- So this project was, really has operated well, and we've gotten very good feedback from the community on, on it as well. So the 301 project conclusions we wanted to bring was that it is a proven model to increase safety on the arterial roadways, consistent traffic flow, and also reduce travel times, and is projected to provide congestion relief for the corridor for approximately the next 20 years. I'd like to introduce Greg Slater, our Executive Director. Any questions?
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to the County Commissioners for having us here today. What you see here is, is a very high-level feasibility analysis that shows a lot of promise that we are willing to explore, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir.
So Commissioners, you can take, we can take questions at this point of time, or we can talk about the next steps, potential next steps, and talk about that, talk about questions after that. It's your pleasure.
Why don't you go ahead and knock it out, and then we'll go to board.
Okay, no problem. So the next is, so the, okay, hope, yes. So potential next steps. So the board can act on the presentation today and ask THIA to move forward with the PDNE study, and ask them to conduct a community outreach as part of that. Also ask for an economic impact analysis, because it's a large project, and there is going to be benefits in South County that we need to explore and see what it is. And also, the third one, the board may want to ask the TPO to put it in the cost affordable plan so that, so that we can explore funding options for this project. So those are the three suggested next steps. It's, your board, your pleasure to direct us which way you want us to go. With that, we'll take questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen.
Yes, and thank you, everyone, for being here today and for all your work on this. I'm going to try not to get overly excited about this project and keep my composure. But, but the importance of something like this, you saw the, the main arteries that they were showing relief to for east and south county, and really for all of Hillsborough County. But you look at, you see roads like Lithia Pinecrest Road, Lumston Road, Gibsonton Drive, Big Bend Road. Those are the roads where so many people in the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County are really suffering. And not to mention about 30% of the future growth in the next decade is estimated to go to South County. We've got to do something. Like I say, it already feels like a little too late, but we can't look back. And I think this, this particular, the way that this, this can work, where we bond this out, and I'm going to ask a few questions from you all, but what it looks like is we bond this out for 30 years, and it's paid for by tolls. And for a lot of folks that don't really like tolls and say they don't want to pay tolls, well, they can take the same roads they took before, just with a lot less traffic. So to me, this, this makes just a lot of sense, not to mention the job creation, and I think the benefit to HART and our public transportation. Mr. Slater, as far as, as far as the corridors, well, first, how are we going to fund the project? Let's start with that. How would we fund the project, and will any county funds be required?
Sure, absolutely. We are an organization that is 100% funded by the toll revenue that we generate off of our system. So when we go into a project like this, you know, there are a lot of things that can greatly influence the economics of a project, the market, the interest rates, you know, the cost of construction at the time of construction, those types of things. But when we go into a project like this, we look at it in terms of a toll-funded bond type of a scenario. You know, we're in a little bit of a transition where we're trying to figure out, like, our best path for bonding, whether it's bonding projects, or whether it's bonding our entire system, and then working on our construction program. But the assumption that we're going to go into is that we're going to work within the right-of-way of the existing roadway, the FDOT roadway, and that we would be funded through toll bonds.
Yeah. And could you give maybe some comments on transit, how it could possibly improve transit as well?
Absolutely. I think that's a really important question when it comes to a corridor like this, that seeing the growth that we're seeing in this region. You know, when you look at the growth that we're seeing, it's really important that you think about a few things. One is that very often, it's an all-of-the-above scenario that, that's needed, both a transit solution, a highway solution, as well as maybe a change in function on some of the surrounding roadways. Second, that we've, we have to focus on moving people and not necessarily just vehicles. And so you have to start with people and then come with that combined solution. And then really making sure that, that HART is at the table with us in trying to look at what types of transit solutions could we supplement with this solution to manage some of the growth that's coming. One of the things that I've seen over the years is one of the most cost-effective transit solutions out there is high-frequency commuter bus service that runs on a free-flowing managed lane type of a facility. So it's, it's, you know, when you have a toll facility that is, is moving and the traffic is moving, you can provide a very effective transit solution, a commuter bus solution as part of that.
Yeah, good. And I feel like you have some experience with this. Could you maybe just give some background if you've dealt with this before?
I have. So, you know, when it comes to projects like this, or all-of-the-above type solutions, or whether it's even corridors that involve a lot of development, whether it's existing development, or whether it's new development, in looking at those, I've worked on express lane projects that had bus rapid transit components to them, whether they're on the system or in parallel systems. I've worked on pure transit-oriented development projects that had not only transit solutions like rail and bus, but they've also had roadway components on how do you get people to those station areas. But then I've also worked on projects over the years that, that had express lane-type facilities or toll facilities that incorporated park-and-ride lots and strategic development areas to run transit service, so that you could manage not only the traffic that we're seeing today, but the traffic that's going to come, the movement that's going to come with the growth.
Great, great. Mr. Frye, I just got a couple of questions for you, and I know you probably need to do a detailed study. But from what you see, is there any additional right-of-way that you see that you will need in the future?
The expectation is, is that we will be operating in the existing right-of-way. But one of the things that we handle in the PDNE, the next, the step if we do that, would be a real detailed analysis to hone in on that, and identify not only the right-of-way, but it also look at more detailed traffic, and also look for disproportional impacts to make sure that we're addressing those along the way, and making sure that the road project fits.
Great, great. Yeah, and I, I really enjoyed actually driving the Gandy one. It's actually such a pleasure to drive it, and I love looking at the aesthetics of it, and which, how you guys, how the final product came out. Could you possibly talk about, would that be similar to what we would see if this gets approved?
For, for the Gandy corridor, we worked with the local businesses, the homeowners associations in the area with the apartment buildings, and also the Chamber. And for that project, we went to 30 feet, so we had natural light coming in. The landscaping was, was done, and the architectural pieces were done to fit what the future of Gandy Boulevard wanted. Our most successful aspect was shop Gandy. We worked with the local businesses to make sure that we kept, during construction, we were able to keep them on their feet and work with them as best as possible. So each community will have its own needs and its own requests. We've been working with Melissa Zornita over at the Planning Commission. I understand there's community plans for each area, so that how we can work with her going forward as part of the pre-PDNE and PDNE, to make sure that we take those into consideration. So there will definitely be a big community outreach and working with the peer organizations to make sure that we accommodate that.
And that's what you did out in Gandy, right? You got, you did a big community outreach. I remember, if I remember correctly, some restaurants were concerned about people passing by there, but all that has been fleshed out, and hasn't been the case. I think they've actually increased in business over there, if I'm not mistaken. So, yeah. Is Justin Hall here? Okay, good. Morning, morning. Thanks for being here today. You know, obviously, you know, the, the need of the extension on the Leroy-Selman is being fleshed out here today, but what about express lanes on I-75? How does that shape out if this project gets going?
Well, I mean, I, I think Greg touched on it. This is an all-or-nothing approach. In fact, a lot of people don't realize our, our regional model has a really robust transit system, even shows a rail, but also these express lanes. So I, I think it's an all-or-nothing, and really, this, this solution here, from what we're seeing from the preliminary traffic data, really helps the interstate system as long, as well as the local streets. So I don't, I don't think this is a conflict with anything that we've planned.
And as far as correspondence from us, should, would you recommend we send a letter of correspondence to FDOT or TPO, or both in combination, or?
I mean, I think that a letter of support's never a bad thing, for us to know clearly what, what your take is. And then also, there's a regional body, the TMA/SCTPA that meets, that talks about regional, projects of regional significance. So I think this would rise to that level. So if that would be the wish of the, the B O C C, also could send a letter to the SCTPA, or even bring it up for their priority list.
But I think you're meeting with them tomorrow, is that correct?
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay, so obviously, we can't probably make that. But could you just explain a little bit what that meeting's about and what the trip is?
Sure, yeah. So the, the trip is a regional fund type that DOT is a 50% participant in. And on top of that, really, what you, by adding a project to the trip list, you also make it eligible for, for other expenditures as well, federal grants, things of that nature. And really, if nothing else, it just communicates that that is a regional priority, which then tells all of us, you know, your Hillsborough staff, DOT staff, and THIA staff, that this is something that, that the region wants to see.
Great, great. Well, I, I'm going to make a motion and listen to some other Commissioners' questions. My motion is I move to direct staff to work with Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority to proceed with the PDNE study, community outreach, and economic impact study for the extension of the Leroy-Selman Expressway from US 301 to Big Bend Road. Additionally, for the B O C C, to send a letter to Hillsborough County Transportation Organization to add this project to the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan Cost Feasible Plan. Thank you.
We got a motion by, by Commissioner Owen, second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. You know, the first thing I would say about this is that if you look at the way the county is growing, at the amount of congestion that we see everywhere, you really have to start from the, I think, from the perspective that we need everything, that we, we have very, very lean public transit, and that's, that's being charitable. Our road systems are already strained to absolute capacity, and it would be irresponsible of us, I think, not to explore every single option out there. And just given what we've experienced with water in South County, it, it's obvious that the need is there, just based on, on the growth that we've seen in the congestion. I represented South, the South Tampa community around Gandy for the entire time that the project went on to build the expressway on the city council. And when I first started, the neighborhoods down there were basically opposed to the project. It, they were, it was very frightening to imagine that something would go on top of Gandy Boulevard. And what happened over the years, I think, a couple of things happened. First of all, it, the congestion, it, it was ahead of South County in terms of how congested it got quickly. Second, the issues related to evacuation started to come into play, and I want to mention that in a second. But the third thing that really changed it, I have to take my hats off to THIA and FDOT and the Chamber. What they did in terms of the community outreach really was something different. Literally, I remember a situation where a dentist's office on Gandy had some problems with their access, and the agencies deployed every resource, every resource they had in order to make sure that people could get in and out of this practice while the construction was going on. And the deliverable at the end really did meet everybody's expectations. Not just the way it looked, but it really has taken traffic off of Gandy Boulevard and made it a much, I think, safer and easier situation for everybody, because all the intersections got upgraded as a result of this, as sort of a byproduct of it. So there were all kinds of other lighting and sidewalk improvements and things that were very helpful. And then the final thing is, you know, this is an elevated evacuation route. At the end of the day, with the amount of population growth that we have, we have to be thinking about how people are going to evacuate out. And the fact that is, people are going to be coming up from Sarasota and Manatee, and they need, they need options. So for those reasons, you know, I wanted to say that I'm in support of it. I think, if anything, we, we need to try to accelerate the timeline of how this is looked at, because the need for it is there now. And, you know, it's not a panacea, nothing is going to be, but every little bit is going to help when we have so many people living here and so many people moving here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And I'm on the page of needing everything and more. It is utter misery for, most of the time, and I wish Commissioner Smith was here, having lived for the last 30 years or so in Ruskin and coming to these meetings, because she would have, I know, a lot to say about the traffic there and how difficult it is. One of the biggest problems when there's ever a, a single accident, there's always more accidents, and you're 30 minutes, an hour, or more backed up. We need every, every single option, and that's, I would definitely support, looking at this as I have also been a big promoter of options, like the ferry, that, I mean, while it doesn't address this, you know, size of, of movement of people or goods, it certainly brings, looks at the problem and helps look at the problem. I, I think we need very much transit on many of these roads. Though I, I know as long as we have the issues that we have in terms of getting any kind of reasonable support for transit, and, and I, I feel like the citizens of Hillsborough County have spoken over and over again that they want it, but until we get the kind of funding for transit that, that we don't have now, we wouldn't be able to use it in a transit capacity. And it made me a little curious, I know in Miami, and it's through FDOT, but some of the toll roads there actually pay for or support some of the transit. And I know it's premature, but I really like to have that also considered in terms of the tolling, also in terms of fixed tolling rather than congestion pricing, which I think is a, a real burden on people. I also think, looking at the design, and that's part of that two-mile piece that you, that THIA did down at the Gandy area, that was an unusual but more expensive design to open it up, I know, and do the kind of work that you did. Now, it was two miles long, and it was through an already, almost an urban, although it was a little suburban, urban, mixed juice. It went through a different kind of environment. I know the, to my familiarity with these, this part of 301, it wouldn't be going through the center of a community quite like it did, it does. It's a different kind of environment with, you know, most of that area with suburban neighborhoods to the sides, or, you know, away from 301 somewhat. So I, I don't know how that would work out in terms, I'll, I'll be curious to see what the community feedback is. I expect it to be very much in support of getting some opportunities to move forward. I was also wondering about the fact that it was parallel to 75, and I know that there are plans about 75 in terms of widening that. I, I also want to really look at improvements on 41. I think that's really important, as well as the flyover, this is to FDOT, but this is just critical. I was doing 41 in the middle of the day, and for no particular reason that I know of, I was caught in gridlock. I'm not sure what exactly, and it went on for a really long time. So I think we, you know, do need all kinds of options. And I don't think, well, I know it's in the backup, but I don't think we heard, for people seeing this, I guess there's a, can you, can you give us a, a just a ballpark? I want people to understand and know, cost in terms of what we're looking at here for, it's 17 miles long, correct, from the end of the expressway now, basically four exits south to west of Apollo Beach. And so that's 17 miles. And what are, what are we looking at? And so that's 17 miles, and what are we looking at projected-wise for the cost?
Their current cost estimate is $1.8 billion.
$1.8 billion. So I think it's important for, you know, that to be known and understood. I know it's quite a bit of engineering, and that's probably, who knows, by the time we get to it. We're looking, if, you know, I know Commissioner Cohen talked about, do haste. If it were to be built on the fastest possible timetable, just, you know, what would be maybe the shortest and longest if it was approved and moving forward?
Sure, I think that's a really great question. I think what I will share is, the real first step for a project like this is to get out in the community and hear from them in terms of what their needs are and where they are before we really kind of speculate too much on the timeline. But I will tell you that, you know, many people think about innovation in terms of technology and solutions, but there's a lot of things that you can do in terms of innovative financing and innovative project delivery that can accelerate a timeline on something like that with, whether it's development agreements or those types of things. I've worked on a number of those over the years, and they can really create a great environment for accelerated construction. But when you look at that system down there, you know, I know, you know, we need some solutions on 75, we need solutions on 301, we need commuter transit service through that corridor. But what we have to really be mindful of, too, is not having too much of that under construction at the same time, creating additional gridlock down there. So, you know, if we were able to go first before 75, it could buy some time on 75 and then kind of shift back and forth as a system. Because traffic is very much like water, it's going to find its way, and it's going to kind of go into some of those surrounding roads. And we have to be really careful to not create an environment where that traffic leaks into some of those neighborhoods and some of those local streets.
And so you didn't give a time, though?
No, we have about two years to a PDNE study, and then probably about three-quarters of the way through that, we will have a much better sense of actual time and delivery. The type of construction will greatly influence that. We believe that when you get further south in the corridor, there may be enough room to work at grade versus being on a structure that could accelerate the timeline as well as reduce some of the costs.
And just, I just think the public is very interested, and the kind of timelines I've seen is somewhere near a decade to two decades. Would you say that that's a fair? And I'm not asking you to commit, I'm just saying, I just think the public needs to understand this, we deal with these things all the time, and I think it's important.
I think it's really important to think about the other things that we have in front of us today. And so, you know, one of the things that I looked at when I first came in here about a year and a half ago, and I looked at our work program and our construction program, it kind of hit me that, over the next 10 years, we're kind of reconstructing and rebuilding because of the age of the expressway and the growth that we're seeing. And so we have a project that's coming up, we're reawarding that later on this summer to rebuild the Salmon Expressway from about the Hillsborough River to the Salmon West Extension. That will be adding another lane in each direction, that will also be redeveloping the undersides and underpasses for better pedestrian movements and community features, as well as carrying that aesthetic look and feel through South Tampa, and building noise walls and those types of things. Then, you know, we have another PDNE study right now that is looking essentially from about, what is it, about 12th Street to, out to Brandon, and trying to kind of those local lanes, adding more capacity there. So it's all going to be kind of hitting us at the same time. And so what we'll have to do is essentially prioritize based on where we feel like we can provide the greatest amount of congestion relief that we can. So our first priority right now is that big construction project in South Tampa that'll probably be completed in about four to five years.
And my other is just about, in terms of the county impacts on this, because this is bonding tolls for the expressway itself, but we're talking about four exits on Big Ben, which a lot of work has been done on. But I'd actually like to see dedicated transit lanes there. But, you know, we have the other interchanges. Is that going to, we know $1.8 billion for the road itself, but in terms of the interchanges, are we going to have county impacts? Because right now, we are strapped, so we, you know, have not been able to pay for construction. We hear a lot about Lithia Pinecrest and Van Dyke. And there are many, many other roads that desperately need to be reviewed and looked at. I just had talked about 41, of course, that's an FDOT road. But in terms of the impacts on the intersections, do you see, you know, will there be a, I know it's very early, but it seems like there will be a bill for the county. It seems like we would have to have some resources to look at those exits.
And Mr. Slater, if you can please make your remarks brief, we need to keep moving here.
Absolutely, we would look at the interchanges, as well as upstream and downstream, working with all of our partners as a system.
Okay, I just, that was actually my last question.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Mr. Slater, can you, are you familiar with the state's toll relief credit program they're doing now?
I am.
Can you just talk about that real briefly? Explain to everyone what it is?
Absolutely, it was a toll relief program that came out of the governor's office in Tallahassee, where what they did was, they appropriated a dollar amount to Florida Turnpike, and any customer who hits 35 transactions or more gets a 50% reduction per month in their toll revenue.
That's right, I have, I get mine monthly now, my email, and I just wanted to point that out for economic viability of people talking about relief. I've heard it on McDill's, concerns about, you know, their active-duty service members paying tolls, and that, I want to make sure that everyone knows about that. And they extended the timeline of that now indefinitely, to my understanding, right? Or does it still have an end date?
I think right now, it's sitting on an appropriation that gets renewed year over year. So, you know, that would be decided next year when they go into session.
I think the goal is for, to try and continue it, to my expectations. And speaking of the governor's office and echoing Commissioner Cohen's, if I need to explain to him our very similar military careers, fib, and say he's better at baseball than me, whatever could point out the importance of maybe the state allowing us to cut some government red tape, wherever that can happen, to move up the timeline. We are the number-one growth hub of the nation, not the state, at this point. And I think that we need to be very mindful of that on how quick we can get this project going. Of course, in all confidence, knowing that we would never sacrifice the safety of the project. So, thank you very much.
I would just say that we have a great team here, where between us and FDOT and the county, and even the city here, we're all working together on all these issues.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cameron Spata?
Yes, I'd just like to say I definitely support this, and I believe also that this is something that should be accelerated as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like to commend staff and Thea for the presentation. One thing I admire, you want to go out into the community first and have that community engagement, and I think that is so important as you think about how you're going to plan this project and have the support from the community. The other thing is, 22 years in between, 2023, 2045, that's a long time. I mean, we'll have more growth by the time we hit 2045. So if the project could be shorter, it would be nice. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion by Commissioner Owen, a second Commissioner Cohen. If no other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Just one, sorry, just one clarification. Did Commissioner Woben, did your motion include sending a letter of recommendation to the, sorry, Commissioner, sorry, did your motion include sending a letter to TMA and a group that is meeting tomorrow in support as well?
It does, I mean, what's the feasibility of us being able to do that? I don't know if it's feasible, but...
It's not feasible to tomorrow, but they can use it for the next year's cycle, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Yes, yes, to send it to them, but I don't think we can get it done by, anything by tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, next item?
Thank you, the next item is item B1. This is to accept the Residential Street Lighting Program Audit Report. And Melinda Zen, oh, sorry, Melinda Zenzari is here to present that, you can correct me, please.
Jenzarly, yes. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I am Melinda Zenzarly, for the record, and I'm here today to request the board to accept the Residential Street Lighting Program Audit Report 2023-06. The audit's objective was to determine the maturity of the program's management activities. The audit was conducted in conformance with international standards of the professional practices of internal auditing. Prior to today, Ms. Kasky and I briefed the Commissioners on the audit report's contents. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Second.
Kevin, we've got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Kemp?
I just want to say they did a good job.
Great, no other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bonnie?
Thank you, we can move to our 10:30 time certain, this is item E1. This is to receive the report from John Flanagan, CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay. The board had requested him to come to the board to talk about the consolidation that's proposed for Hillsborough and Pinellas Counties. And this is also related to item B2. Ken Jones with our staff is also in the audience to assist as well.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, thank you, Ms. Wise. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me some time to talk about this, and I'll talk briefly, but a very important topic as it relates to the consolidation of Career Source Tampa Bay and Career Source Pinellas. In 2021, the Florida Legislature unanimously approved the REACH Act, which simply stands for the Reimagining Education and Career Help Act. It does, it does a couple of basic things and important things. Number one, it increases accountability for the public workforce system through a number of issues like establishing letter grades. It also mandates better cooperation with state agencies, like the Department of Children and Families and the Department of Education. Through one of those efficiencies, one of the, one of the, one of the important tenants of the REACH Act was to look at the construction of your local workforce boards, of which there are 24 in the state. And it gave the Board of Career Source Florida, which is a state board, it gave them the mandate to take a look at this and see if that was, in fact, the correct number, or there needed to be some consolidation. Through about a year-long study with the help of Ernst &amp; Young as a consultant, the Career Source Florida approved 21 workforce boards. So there were three other, there's 21 counties affected, reducing again from 24 to 21. We happen to be one of those, which we will, by July 1 of 2024, through the Governor's State Workforce Plan, we will be part of a larger regional workforce board that includes Pinellas County. We've already started to have some conversations with Pinellas County, led by Ms. Wise and their counterparts over there, along with Ron Barton and Ken Jones from our county staff. So this is a pretty long process out into the future. It's not by 2045 by any means, but it will be probably one to two years before we see, you know, an actual, an actual merging of the two boards, whether it's, you know, whether it's one board acquiring another or assuming responsibilities of another, or if it might just be the sunsetting of two organizations and the creation of a new one. What will that mean for the residents of Hillsborough County? Our hope is not much at all. Really, what this bill is intended to do is to really reduce some administrative redundancies that the legislature feels currently exists right now, and to make the system more streamlined. So reducing some administrative burden and moving some of those dollars over towards programming and services to job seekers and employers. Next steps really are for Hillsborough and Pinellas County to work on an interlocal agreement that will establish a new chief elected official who can then appoint the board, and at that point, the board can create, with the, with the support of the county, bylaws, interlocal agreements, and hiring new leadership staff. So I was really quick there, I blew through that, but I just wanted to make sure that you all understood the process, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And I'm also here to answer any questions about item E2, which is the annual Career Source planning budget. So happy to answer any questions any of the Commission may have.
Thank you so much, John. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I know I talked to you for quite some time about this and had asked about some reports, from what I was hearing, before the session ended and in the intervening time, and they'd been talked about for a while, this requirement for the merger came out. And I just, just a few things that I'd asked you about before. I wanted to make sure that unlike so many of our mergers, that there is a, you know, something in there that represents us by population, some prorated basis in terms of the board.
Yes, Commissioner, absolutely. There are several boards in the state that have multiple counties as part of their workforce region. There's a statutory formula that occurs that allows resources to go to each particular county based on a number of factors, not just population, but poverty, unemployment, things of those nature, too. So there is a formula statutory that's built into that, and we'll be able to extrapolate that between Hillsborough and Pinellas County when the time comes where we are one region.
And I'm just really pleased with the job that you have done. For newer Commissioners, if you're not familiar, the Career Source boards were merged for a time before, and there was all kinds of corruption, ended up with a federal, we ended up paying a million dollars, which to this day, we're supposed to be reimbursed by insurance, correct, Ms. Wise? But that has not happened yet, yes. So I was disappointed with the mandate, because I think it really, I just think there's, there can be tremendous oversight problems, it's a federally crafted board, it's huge, and sometimes when boards are really big, and there's little opportunity with just one Commissioner on it to do the, you know, kind of oversight. So I know it's a mandate, I hope it works out. I just say, I've been much more pleased, and certainly, we've been much more effective as two separate organizations at this time.
I appreciate that, thank you, Commissioner. The good news is, when the interlocal agreement's created, there'll be representation from both sides on that new consortium, so we will certainly, you know, take that. And number two, hopefully learn the lessons of the past and make sure that that doesn't, those types of things don't occur anymore. We've done a fantastic job with the help of the county, Mr. Barton and Mr. Jones, certainly, of making sure we put safeguards in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again, to make it very open and transparent. And I don't suspect anything will be different when, when we have to make some changes coming up in the next year or two.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to receive the report? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
And just stay close, because I believe Ken Jones is going to come up and just present this item B2. And then Mr. Flanagan is here for any questions as well.
Good morning.
Thank you, Bonnie, good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, Commissioners. Ken Jones, Director of the County's Minority and Small Business Enterprise Program, housed in our Economic Development Department. And prior to that, and still recently, the county's liaison to Career Source Tampa Bay, presenting before you Career Source Tampa Bay's FY 2324 budget. This is their planning budget, or projected budget, of the expected revenues for their next fiscal year, which runs and coincides with the state's fiscal year of July to June. This planning budget is presented in a standardized format, which is provided by Career Source Florida and used by all of the 24 workforce regions across the state. These revenues are based on projections provided by the state and is based on federal and state workforce training appropriations, local economic conditions, and employment formulas. Based on historical experience, the projected revenue amounts provided by the state are highly accurate and reliable. This planning budget shows the projected total revenue of approximately $22 million, which is a decrease of about 5.4 from their current fiscal year. This planning budget has been reviewed and approved by Career Source Tampa Bay's Board of Directors, which also serves and sits as our local workforce development board. In compliance with federal, we owe the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act guidelines. In our respective agreement with Career Source Tampa Bay, this planning budget is presented to you as a chief of locally elected officials for your approval. Mr. Flanagan and I are available if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for either Mr. Jones or Mr. Flanagan? If not, can we have a motion to approve the budget?
Summued. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that takes care of all of our time certain items. That takes care of all of our time certain items. And now we can move to the commissioners section. The first one is Commissioner Cohen's item regarding renaming the courtroom.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. This is really an item so that we can schedule a ceremony later in the fall to honor our retiring Chief Judge of eight years, Ronald Figueroa. I don't think I need to go into any detail about what a marvelous job he's done and how esteemed he is in the community. So I'd like to move approval.
Second. Motion to approve Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Owen. And just to say, great job, Commissioner Cohen. Echo your comments 100%. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Owen's item regarding the analyzing the criteria and procedures outlined in House Bill 657 regarding school zones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you may know from the backups, we had a bipartisan bill, House Bill 657. Again, it's in the backups, which basically protects our kids in school zones. We have thousands of kids a day that are walking and riding their bikes to school. This is a really, really good bill. I'm hoping that we can kind of follow Tallahassee and take a bipartisan approach to this as well. I think it's important to first talk about what this isn't, okay? This is something that's going to detect speeders that are typically going over 11 miles an hour. So it's not like if you're going a few miles an hour, they give you a lot of grace on this, from what I can tell from the bill. Another thing is, it doesn't put points on your record as well. So it's basically a fine just to prevent people from speeding in these zones. And from talking to our law enforcement and sheriff, it's very, very hard to manage with staff. So one of the big issues, I think, though, and Ms. Beck can allude to, is kind of the timing. I was kind of hopeful that if my fellow commissioners agree that this is appropriate to bring right now. Ms. Beck, could you touch on some of the issues with timing if this board moves for some action?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. The bill actually has a lot of detail of the process in it, and one of those details is that the Florida Department of Transportation is required to come up with specifications and some installation specifications and so forth. And they've been given a deadline of December 31 of 2023 to do that. So our ordinance, if that were to be directed, couldn't be done until those specifications have been developed. So it's sort, we're sort of contingent on the timing of when FDOT gets that done.
Okay, very good. So I'm going to make a motion. I move to direct the county's attorney's office to work with county staff and stakeholders, including the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, and if need be, the School District of Hillsborough County, to analyze the criteria and procedures outlined in House Bill 657 that must be followed to enact a school zone speed detection program in the county, to delegate the operation of the program to the sheriff, similar to the red light camera program, and to bring back a draft ordinance establishing this program at the appropriate time.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do we have a second? Second Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Walstall.
It sounds big brother-y, and I know it's going to get that stigma placed on it. But the fine, I didn't hear you, but did you articulate what happens to the fine money?
The fine money, my understanding, would be, would go to the Sheriff's Department. Hillsborough, Ms. Wise, if you want to comment on that?
Yes, and I don't have the statute in front of me, but the statute is very clear about how the money can be used, and it is for school safety.
Yeah, so I think $60 of it, public safety, $5 of it for crossing guard, and the other remaining amount, I think, is for education to the public or something to that effect. So it's broken down, but it's all going to go to a public safety component and for the ability to get crossing guards.
And I think that's an important takeaway for any negativity this gets, is that it's not a, it's not a quote unquote money grab. This is something that would go back to facilitating safety of children, nothing more, nothing less. I walk my child to Mary Bryant and see the crossing guards almost get ran over, and there's not even a runway there for people to be going that fast. It's just people are trying to push through that gridlock, so I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I think that's an excellent point in terms of the red light camera programs, too much of it going back to the companies and things like that. So I'm really pleased to hear that breakdown. But that being said, again, we are second in the nation over and over again for pedestrian and bicycle and car crash fatalities, for deaths. And we can do, we need to do anything and everything we can to work that. I know we have, we've really been looking at our two-mile safety zone around schools because kids under Florida law are required to walk up to two miles to school. And so much of that can be a treacherous walk because of the infrastructure we have in the county, but particularly right at schools. It's just, we need to do everything we can to keep kids safe. And we've had too many students that have died, even since I've been serving as a commissioner, hit by cars. So I hope we can move something forward.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. I'm in support of the motion. I just want to say, though, that I would be in support of it if it added points to people's licenses. The fact is that speeding in a school zone habitually, doing it over and over and over again, is something that ought to cause somebody's license, in my view, to be suspended. And the fact is that this is a deterrent, I'm sure it's helpful, but it doesn't solve the problem of the really bad offenders who need to be taken off the road. But I am going to support it. Thank you.
And I just want to say, great job, Commissioner Owen. Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm excited about this, obviously from a public safety perspective, but also as a parent who's, you know, driven one or both of my kids to school for probably the last 15 years, this is needed. It's my understanding, I think, before these programs are implemented, there's usually some type of educational program that the citizens are notified in advance. And frankly, if you can't keep it less than 11 miles over the speed limit, you deserve a ticket. So I wholeheartedly support it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to add on that, because I didn't touch on that, there's a, the notice provision for this, there's a 30, could you touch on that real quick?
Yes, there's, like I said, there's a lot of process in this and a lot of public engagement. So as we move forward, we'll bring forward all those details, too.
Okay, good. All right, great. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. We can move on to our staff reports now. And our first one is going to be item G two. This is to receive a report on the 2023 Florida Legislative Session. And this is Cameron Pennant, and he had a great first year in this session, and we're very pleased. He's going to go over, I know, Commissioner Hagan, you asked separately to, for us to come back and talk about the Live Local Act. Cameron will touch on it, but we will have a more detailed discussion in the future.
All right. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, county commissioners, county staff, members of the public. For the record, I am Cameron Pennant, Director of Government Relations for Hillsborough County. I am pleased to submit to the Board the 2023 Legislative Session final report and to provide a brief overview of the session, including some of the significant actions that were taken that will impact the county. This past legislative session was the most active on a legislative and an executive front. There was 368 bills that were passed, the most number of bills passed in recent memory. The budget, the record budget, was $117 billion. There was $10.9 billion in total reserves, the most on record. The governor recently released his veto, his vetoes of different parts of the budget. It was the lowest amount of vetoes in recent memory of about half a billion dollars. Our legislative agenda that you all passed earlier this year is broken up into two main parts, the appropriation side and the policy side. On the appropriation side, this session, we successfully secured approximately $9.1 million. $5 million for the African American Arts and Cultural Center, $2.5 million for the Hillsborough County Emergency Operations Center, and $1.5 million for short-term residential treatment beds. On the policy side, two of our main policy items that we had, on the 2018 transportation SRTACs, there was no legislative decision made this session. On the sovereign immunity and tort reform issue, there was also no legislative decisions made this session. Bills impacting local governments, there was a lot. There was a lot. Most notably, of course, the Live Local Act, SB 102, the housing bill. This bill enacts a comprehensive statewide workforce housing strategy to increase the availability of attainable housing in the state of Florida. I do defer to the county attorney for a more detailed explanation, as requested by Chair Hagan and the board. The FRS bill, SB 7024, of course, this bill also makes substantial changes to the Florida retirement system. For our county staff, the Deferred Retirement Option Program, or DROP, as it's known, has been extended from five years, as is current, to eight years. This is a big change that the state made in order to better retain a lot of county staff and government employees that were currently losing to retirement. One of the other major bills was SB 250, the natural emergencies bill. This was the post-hurricane bill, post-hurricane season bill. This bill specifically, its restrictions on land use and inspection fee is a major issue, of course, but these restrictions are in effect until October 2024. It is important to note that our county, although we have been succumbed under the bill, we were not the main targets of the bill. The other two notable items, of course, were the heart study and T-BARDA disbandment, HB 1397 and HB 155, respectively. For the heart study, it's essentially going to do a complete review of the heart program and see what kind of legislative action the legislature would want to take next session. And then for T-BARDA disbandment, it was essentially the dissolution of that organization. And finally, one of the other major impact bills was the E-Verify law, the SB 1718 Immigration Bill, as requested by Commissioner Myers at the last regular meeting. A detailed fact sheet regarding this bill is also in today's legislative brief. The bill essentially restricts the access and ability of individuals that do not have legal immigration status. Finally, I would like to issue just some thank yous. The success of this legislative agenda is not singular. It is an amalgamation of all the different elected officials and individuals that helped make this possible. To our state delegation and notably our appropriation sponsors, Senator Russon and Representative McClure for the African American Cultural Center, Senator Collins and Representative Alvarez for the Emergency Operations Center, Senator Burgess and Representative Cheney for the SRT mental health beds. Special thanks to Representative Garrison and Senator Albrecht for their assistance. Our state contract teams, Jeff and John with Smith, Bryan, and Myers, Matt and Carlos with Valid Partners. Also, I'd like to thank my GRSS team for their support. And also, would like to specifically thank Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Owens, and Commissioner Walstall for your support up in Tallahassee in making this agenda so successful. That is it. I will be bringing forward to the Board the 2024 legislative agenda in short order, as we have many items to discuss for that next legislative session. I'm open for all questions.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Commissioner Myers?
Just want to say, Cameron, thank you so much for your support while you were in session. Just the educational piece has sent us so many emails, but most important was to keep us informed, and that was new for me as a commissioner, to receive the updates. So I certainly appreciate it. So kudos to you, what you did on behalf of the county during this session. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo Commissioner Myers' comments. Great job. If no other comments, can we have a motion to receive the report?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next staff report is item G three. This is to receive a report on the county's construction apprenticeship program. And Mr. Scott Stromer is here to present this item.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item G three is just going to be a brief report on the status of the construction apprenticeship program, which, if the Board recalls, it became effective on September 1 of 2021. The program requires contractors to track and use apprentices for the hours up to, you're supposed to do at least 12% of the hours for projects at over $1 million on county-funded construction projects. As of June 5, there were 18 awarded contracts that were tracking. Five of those actually have activity. The balance of those are really miscellaneous contracts and depends on how the work is divvied up, and then those will start to come online here. The average right now on the program is about 18.36% of the hours of the total hours, or ahead of the 12% currently. So we sought and received feedback from the stakeholders, departments. There were three areas that maybe some opportunities for improvement, and dealt primarily with how we track participation, the dollar threshold for the program itself, which is currently $1 million, and the mandatory participation versus an incentive participation model. So after going through all of that, there were, what, five primary opportunities for improvement. We want to work to create an online directory to kind of strengthen the relationship between the businesses and the apprenticeship programs that we have here locally, develop a training guide to help vendors guide them through the process of establishing their own apprenticeship programs that comply with the Florida Department of Education and U.S. Department of Labor. We did that with one very small firm. I mentioned in the report, and it's been a very, it was a very valuable process. And that vendor has just recently been awarded a contract with City of Tampa as a result of that, and they are just doing an amazing job. Also, the possibility to increase the definition of the construction project. Right now, it is $1 million. I do mention in the report that Broward County has a very similar program. When these programs were rolled out, they were all very similar, and theirs, theirs has moved to $5 million is that trigger point for when this program begins. Also, one of the trickier part of tracking, if you remember that our disadvantaged business is tracked by dollars, this program is tracked by hours. And on fixed-price contracts, we normally don't track hours. So it took a little bit different infrastructure to kind of set that up. So another option would be to establish a dollar threshold or a percentage of and track it very similar. And the last one was, the biggest one is just that mandatory requirement upfront of the 12%. Some models are out there to where that's moved to the end of the process, and if they do successfully meet all the requirements, the 12% are exceeded, we would establish a certain payout of what that is, and that would come back to the Board at the completion of the project. So they achieve this, and then the incentive payment would be that, and they would be actually incentivized to do that instead of making upfront required. So hopefully that helps in the interest of time. This report speaks for itself, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and thank you for this report. To really touch, I thought one of the interesting things were the amount of apprentices used horizontal versus vertical projects, and that more during the vertical projects. Did I read that right?
Yes.
Could you touch on that, exactly what that is and the difference?
Yeah, so we were very surprised. So the road construction projects typically are not, don't have apprenticeship programs. You're going to see electrical and plumbing and all of that. Most of those contracts for us are in the form of miscellaneous contracts. So they're a bunch of small projects that we roll under a contract, and they have a factor, and so those are starting to roll out now. We did staff, so Kelly, who runs this program for us, actually worked with Department of Transportation and all of their folks and their programs, and actually get contractors into that. And so road construction is actually is the meat of it right now. They are the five primaries that we're seeing. So it's very successful.
Yeah, and to touch on what you were alluding to for the DM and DWBE, we base that off dollar-based total award. And from what I read is, did I read it right, saying that we actually don't even really have the software to do it the way we're doing? Or could you touch on that real quick?
Yep. We're using B2G, which is what economic development now uses to track the disadvantaged business program. So essentially, it'd be very similar to tracking for Davis Bacon, and so the hours and all of that. It's a very tricky thing. So it's just, there's a disconnect there. And remember that this program, you can't have a double, meaning that you can't count the disadvantaged business hours against the apprenticeship program as well. So there's that disconnect there as well, so.
Yeah, and on the threshold, the $1 million, I mean, a lot's changed the last couple of years on the cost of a job, right? And it could be a reason why the other county moved to 5 million, which I'm for. And does it limit the pool of bidders in some cases because of, and by the way, I like this ordinance. I love the, I think it's been successful. I think where we're at now is just tweaking it to where we've learned a lot from it. But does it limit, in some cases, the amount of bidders that we may have for a project?
It's, quite frankly, it's just, it's another layer of compliance. And so they're having to take staff, and they're spending a lot of time to tracking hours on fixed-price contracts. It's not something normally they do. So they've had to kind of create a whole infrastructure to do that on these projects.
Okay, great. I'm going to make a motion, and I've actually written this down. I took from Commissioner Walstall's train of thought here, and I wrote this down. But really, my motion is going to kind of, going to kind of mirror what the opportunities of improvements were in the study. So I move for staff to create an online directory to connect and develop a So I move for staff to create an online directory to connect and develop a strong network of vendors, apprentices, sponsors and community organizations, and for staff to develop a training program to guide vendors through the process of creating a registering, company-sponsored apprenticeship programs with FDOE or USDOL. I further direct the county's attorney's office to draft an ordinance amending the construction apprenticeship program ordinance to include the following: an increase of the construction project threshold to $5 million, change from the hourly base to dollar-based measures to simplify tracking, and move from mandatory requirement to an incentive-based model, removing the liquidated damages provision. And I have a copy of that if it gets seconded and approved.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. I had one question. When I read this over, the first thing I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Our role of elected officials is not to punish people, and this really looked like a punitive measure, and that's just not my idea of the good role of government. And I read through this, and my good friend is actually, to our understanding, the first black licensed plumber in the state of Florida, grew up in the projects of Tampa before they were torn down. And when I read this, this would actually be punitive to his business. He's now a licensed general contractor. He's moved on from being only a plumber. This would actually be restrictive. This would inhibit his ability to operate if he was applying for these types of contracts. So I would just really discourage any line of thought that we might have going forward that would be ruling with a stick rather than a carrot in incentivizing good behavior. There's the really neat program, I forget what it's called, at the sheriff's office to train people in skilled labor to be apprentices, and whatever we're doing, if we can make sure that we're networking, because then we get multifaceted benefits of reducing recidivism on top of it and breaking the cycle for those folks, putting them into a pipeline of an already strained labor force, and incentivizing organizations to, if they can meet that goal using those programs, then they get a carrot. So for those reasons, I'm going to support some of these changes. What was the liquidated part of it?
Well, it's exactly what you're saying. It's removing that liquidated damage and making it incentive. So if the people, if they don't want to track, they don't have to track, and they won't get the incentive. That's the bottom line. Correct?
That's correct. Okay. Okay, very good. And then, yes, I do second the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And I first brought this forward a few years ago, and I'm, I think it's done well. I was proud to see the report. I would be willing to support raising the contract pricing from $1 million to $5 million as it is in Broward County. I think even back then, it was $5 million in Broward County, and I can see where that's an issue here. In terms of the, in terms of our projects that we do, these are our own projects, what, you know, I imagine we don't do a lot of the vertical construction that you talk about, you know, building buildings, but rather the horizontal, as you put it, the pipe sidewalks and roads. And it looks like it inspired some success here in terms of making that happen where it hadn't happened before because this requirement was put out there. Is that, I mean, is that accurate, and the percentage of vertical kind of pieces that we have is pretty de minimis?
Yeah, it is. So the report's a little bit skewed, just because, remember that if we go build a building or a structure, that'll fall under that, so that's pretty easy. We have a lot of miscellaneous contracts. We're essentially job order contracts where the contracts, if something comes up, something has to be repaired, it may only be $100,000 work, but the aggregate, that contract may be $5 million, $6 million, so we still roll that under the program and ask the firms to still participate and do what they can. So that's why verticals, yeah, verticals lag it a little bit behind. So we won't know until they issue those task orders of exactly which trades are going to be needed and all of that, so. But you're absolutely right. We were very surprised, and it's been very successful.
And I think part of it is because it does incentivize our looks at the beginning of the program and who we take, rather than at the end, oh, do you want to keep track of this or that? I understand some of the issues with, as you've outlined them, with tracking hourly instead of in terms of financial or dollars. And, you know, I could see where there could be, you know, still retaining the intense of this program while doing, you know, the $5 million and then looking at financial tracking of some sort instead of the hourly tracking. However, that, you know, I think the specifics of that could be probably more closely outlined by you all in terms of what would be effective. But I do believe that the incentive model and what you said is the most effective that we can do in how we have it crafted now. By requiring these apprentices, apprenticeships, you know, as part of these large public contracts that are taxpayer dollars, our money, and, you know, for our local people to train them up, I think that we can promote training residents in apprenticeships and allow them to gain valuable job skills and keep them in town and employ people here. And this is, you know, becoming an issue, and I know that we're familiar with it here, retaining and keeping people employed here rather than bringing them out and making sure that they can stay and live here and pay their bills and that we do what we can. So I do not want to get rid, I think it's a little bit too much at this time, to get rid of the third part. I'd rather craft and refine the first two, which would be up to $5 million, the pricing, and look at that. So I guess, I guess at this time, I'd like to make a substitute motion, raising it to $5 million and looking at a pricing scale, but still keeping in place the focus on, at the front end rather than the back end, which I kind of think if we did that, we'd be throwing out the baby with the bathwater, and we wouldn't have what we should have in terms of encouraging the apprenticeships, the local, even if we put it down to, instead of 12%, I don't know why quite that number was chosen, but 10% maybe, and, you know, look at how we could do that. But I think it's a really good thing for us to encourage with our public contracts on the front end. And I'm, I can see what it did with these horizontal contracts, and I'll make a substitute motion to take those remeasures.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, sir.
So on the horizontal construction, it's been successful, but we do get pushback from those vendors because they do have to, it's quite a bit to track all of it because that's something they haven't done before, so they do have to do that. The trade-off of going to incentive was that us, sole procurement, economic development, as we work together on this, is to do a better job of setting up those networks and encouraging, working with the sheriff's office, work with state corrections to get folks into those programs, and then also to help train firms how to set up their own programs, actually take that initiative. And that was really kind of the trade-off, that if it did go from a mandatory to an incentive, that we would do a better job of helping facilitate and encourage it.
But we could do both, right? I mean, we could do those things that you mentioned, and I'll incorporate that actually too as part of my substitute motion, because I certainly want that part of it as well. And, but to, and do the $5 million and the, the, looking at the pricing or the dollar amounts as opposed to the hours, since that's a burden.
All right, we have a substitute motion by-
I'll second-
Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen.
Can you-
Well, can I get a point of order? I'm sorry. Because I, Commissioner Kemp, you were using the word incentive, which was mine. You meant to retain the penalty provision at a certain lower percentage or the same? If you could just clarify that for me.
I'll do the, I'd be willing to, just because this is complicated to craft this here when you all are the experts, but I just offered the 10%, just I wasn't sure where the 12% came from. And when you say penalty, I say in the front end, in terms of awarding contracts that incentivize this. So that's what I would, how I characterize it.
Okay, a point of order again. A liquidated damage legally is technically a penalty. It's used in all contracts, and liquidated damages does mean that.
Yes, and it would be good to have clarification on your intentions for liquidated damages.
Yeah. So I won't be supporting the substitute motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I would-
Got any comment?
Yeah. I would just keep that part of the program as it stands now.
Just to be real clear, so if they, if a firm comes in, if they say they can't do it, that is a responsive issue, so I can't award a bid that does not agree to the 12% upfront. And if they don't achieve that 12% currently, I believe it's a 5% of what those total hours would have equated to. So that's what the penalty or the liquidated damage would be, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, it's still, it's still punitive. It's not the role of good government, so I won't support.
All right, we got a substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on the substitute motion.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Hagan, Owen and Wostel voted no.
Okay. Thank you. Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. We have future discussion items, and then we'll take A40 after that.
Okay. Anyone have a future issue? Commissioner Myers?
This is regarding CXX Railroad. I had a town hall meeting about two weeks ago, and several of my constituents came to me regarding the railroad tracks on US 41 in Riverview and in Gibsonton. And I'm going to direct the county administration and county attorney's office to work together with CXX as it relates to repair of the tracks in Riverview and to ask CXX not to run their trains during the peak hours. Okay, thank you.
Bonnie, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cameron Spade?
Yes, so on that last vote there, I thought she said that we were dropping, she was going to drop that percentage out of that, so.
I stated, yeah, 12 to 10%.
Oh, so you were keeping that.
The 10%. I removed the 12% and did it to the 10% and upped the dollar amount.
Because I was wanting to, for the original is what my vote meant to be for, so I would say no on that one.
Okay, so we need to have a-
Apologize for that.
That's okay. We need to have a reconsideration. Someone moved to reconsider the last item?
I think you just did, right?
Okay, so motion, Commissioner Cameron Spade. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Owen. Please accord your vote on the reconsideration.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Wostel voted no.
Okay, so back to that item.
Yeah, I thought we were revoting, but just leave it.
So now we-
I do approve the motion to reconsider.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, so now we need a, we need a motion to vote on, or go back to the, I asked a clerk, do we go back to the substitute motion and re-vote on that?
Yes, you'd need to.
Okay, so we're going to go to the substitute motion. Again, it was by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on the substitute motion.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Cameron Spade, Hagan, Owen and Wostel voted no.
Okay, so now we'll go to the original motion. That was by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostel. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Myers voted no.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Spade, do you have any other items?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to report on the community development block grants, and specifically, I would like to request to define everything that the money can be applied to, list the projects that will qualify for funding, and also, if you could explain the process, how to apply, and are there any opportunities to improve or streamline? Thank you. Thank you.
You give it up?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, to the last item that was pulled?
Thank you. And the last item is item A40. It was pulled by Commissioner Wostel. This is to select awarded authorized negotiations with three firms regarding owner rehabilitation program services. And as Brenda's coming to the podium, this is an RFP that went out, and we're recommending awarding to three different firms. When the RFP did go out, it was noted that there were various funding sources that could be used for that RFP. Since then, however, when the awards come back to you, which they do all, do need to come back to you, individual contracts, we will be more specific in that only ship dollars will be used for those awards. That was not written in the original item as written, however.
All right, thank you.
So I think that caused some confusion.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brenda Brackens. I am the interim Affordable Housing Director, and I'm here to present item A40 in order to select and award negotiations with the three highest-ranked and best-qualified firms with the opportunity to provide owner-occupied rehab services for the Affordable Housing Services Department at a total cost of $4.5 million. I'm available for any questions, and I recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, yeah. My concerns in pulling it had nothing to do with the award or anything like that. It's that it specifically said that it was going to use different funding buckets, and it was going on consent, and we've heard beneficiaries of some of these property taxes that have been doled out come in and advocate on the grounds, well, you said yes in the past, so please follow through now. So it gave me reservations when I dug through, and I feel bad for Mr. Stromer. I'm going to give him a hug if that's what every RFP looks like. And I couldn't find the financial breakouts. So when it's on consent, and I'm putting my yes on it, and I do not consent to property taxes being spent like this, so I pulled it. It turns out, but I would say that when we're writing the backups, I do read them, and if we can be more specific about those things when it's coming for us to put a yes vote on it, because I don't want that in some way to be able to be swerved and say that we somehow approved those funding buckets retroactively. That was all. That was my only concerns with this item. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and thanks for pulling this. I just have one question. The, what this section is doing is it's allowing staff to enter into negotiations, and then contracts will come back. Is that how it works? So, and this has to do with rehabbing existing properties, not acquiring new, right?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Good motion to approve. Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, any other items?
That's everything.
All right, we're adjourned.